Folks, we are scheduled for a public hearing this evening. And so before we call the regular meeting to order, I would like to open up with the public hearing. This is ordinance number 13-2025. It's the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-2026. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations, therefore levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. Having called the public hearing to order at this point in time, I would like anyone that would like to speak in regards to ordinance number 13-2025, which is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-26, to indicate by raising your hand, please. No one has indicated that they wish to speak in regards to ordinance number 13-2025. I will ask the second time, is there anyone here by show of hand that would like to speak in regards to ordinance number 13-2025, the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-26? So noted, no one has raised their hand to indicate they'd like to speak. This is a third and final ask if you would like to speak in regards to ordinance number 13-2025. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-26. If you would like to take advantage of this third and final time to engage in a conversation or to give comment to the City of Greer Budget Ordinance, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, I will call the public meeting to a close. With that, I'll open our meeting tonight by calling the meeting to order. As we always do at the first of our meetings, Councilman Mark Hopper will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invitation for council. If you would like to join us, please stand.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness to us as individuals and our families and us as a community. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of living in a community like Greer. We thank you for the privilege you've granted each one of us to serve our community in this capacity. We ask for this time now that you would give us wisdom and humility and help us to be wise stewards of the resources that you've given to our community, Lord. Would help everything that's done and said this evening to be to your honor and to your glory. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. We have two this evening in regards to our regular meeting, which was scheduled and held on May 27, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we assembled on June 3, 2025 for a workshop meeting in regards to the budget. Those minutes are contained in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second and a second. With that, any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Aaron Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of all, excuse me, we need to recognize the petitioner this evening. I was going to jump over two or three people there for a moment. We have Lisa Bane with us this evening. Ms. Bane is the owner of Corn Star Food Truck, and she would like to speak to council regarding the business license requirements for food truck vendors. Ms. Bane, we ask only that you be conscientious of the time that you speak and that you would make your presentation. We typically don't have comment after that, but if someone on council would like to take an interest in what you bring to us as information this evening, it may come back again as a future matter for this council. All right, floor is yours.
Thank you.
If you would state your name and your address as a matter of record, please.
My name is Lisa Bane. I live at One Lake Vista Court in Taylor, South Carolina. Good evening and thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm nervous, I apologize. But I'm also a convicted felon. I used to struggle with the use of drugs and alcohol. And if you know anybody that's ever struggled with drugs and alcohol, usually I have run-ins with the police. I didn't, I was not a very good drug addict. Went to jail a lot. I had a lot of consequences to my actions. And I guess if I didn't, I probably would have never stopped, so. But everyone who knew me and loved me would tell me, Lisa, get your life together. Stop using dope. Why don't you become a more productive member of society? And it seemed impossible at one point in my life. But today I stand before you as the daughter of Christ. I'm a mother to two boys. I'm a daughter to my mother as well. My father's passed away. I'm a sister to three siblings and an aunt to numerous nieces and nephews. And I'm a good neighbor to many people in my community where I live. I'm a business owner. I vote regularly. I'm a conservative. I volunteer my time and energy for various organizations, including here in the City of Greer. I own and operate a recovery home in Greenville, where I share my experience, strength, and hope with others trying to become productive members of society. I encourage them that life is good, that they can do better, and that they will be accepted into the community given they put in the hard work that it takes to recover. I've been approved by probation, parole, and pardon to work with those in addiction. I've been approved to work through Medicaid in the state of South Carolina. I've been approved to go on field trips with my children. I've been certified as a peer support specialist through Favor, Detox, and Phoenix Center. But I cannot sell roasted street corn at the farmer's market in Greer. We, as a community, have been directly affected by addiction. There's not a person on this panel or in this room that does not love someone who is struggling with drug addiction. It devastates families, businesses, and communities. And we all want to see that person we love get better. I know how, but I'm not here for that tonight. I'm here for myself and everyone after me that finally does get better? Then what? Then what? We get a job? We're told to get a job. Get your kids back, volunteer, make enough money to support your family, get involved with community. And that's exactly the things that I've done. And it was going great until this year, when I tried renewing my business license in the City of Greer. And I was shunned away. It wasn't good enough for Greer. Although I spend my money in Greer, I volunteer in Greer. I frequent events and respect the law in Greer. I've held a business license in Tribage Rest, Pickens, Greenville, Sally, Orangeburg, Rock Hill, Easely, and in Greenville County, just to name a few. But not Greer, my home, the place I spend the most time with my children and my family. Greer says I'm still not good enough. I'll always be second class here in Greer, is how I felt. It's not okay to encourage those we love and in our community to get better just to tell them to go away. I'm asking you tonight to lift these restrictions on the business license in Greer, to reinstate my business license. I'm asking you to understand that it's highly unlikely for an active drug user that's went through all the red tape it takes for a food truck and to come up with the money and the materials and all the things that's needed to show up on time and to be a respected member of society. Someone in active addiction's not doing that. Take it from someone who's been there. But with encouragement, I'm sorry, I want you to think about that person that I talked about earlier that we love, that you know personally that's addicted and struggling. They wouldn't be able to do that in the condition they're in now, but wouldn't we like to see them do better? And it's possible with encouragement, help, and with the Lord, of course, it is possible to get better. But what if they do, and when they do, we just turn them away? Again, I'm asking you to reinstate my business license for the City of Greer and to rethink the restrictions you've put in place to hold people back from being productive. I have a couple of letters that I gave you all. I had more stuff, but I'm a very, as you can see, I'm a very busy lady. And I just want you to know again just how it felt. You know, I've done business in the City of Greer before. And if any of you have ever been to the farmer's market in Greer, the roasted street corn that's sold there, that's me. And I love it. I love this town. I love where I live. And I understand that you have rules. I'm not asking you to, I am asking you to make an exception for me, but I'm also asking you just to remember that some people, recovery is a real thing. And necessity is the birth of invention. Because of my criminal history, I can't be on city council. I can't get a fancy job in the hospital as a nurse, which is what I was going to school for. You know, there's lots of things that I already can do. But selling corn at the farmer's market shouldn't be one of them. I think that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We will take your concerns under advisement, and we appreciate your time. Thank you. With that then, let's move to the administrator's report. Mr. Mayorman?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much. Real quickly, it is summertime, and it wouldn't be summertime in Greer without Freedom Blast, June 28, from 6 till 10:30 here at City Park. One thing that Freedom Blast thrives on and is always appreciative of is volunteers. So if anyone would like to volunteer to work at Freedom Blast, you get one of the coolest t-shirts that Greer can possibly offer and the hail and hearty thanks of council and staff. But if you are interested in volunteering at Freedom Blast, contact Robbie Davis in our events division here with the city. Registration is open for the Citizens Police Academy. This 12-week program will offer insight in how police officers perform their duties and serve the community. So if you're interested, see the City of Greer's website. And finally, at the Center for the Arts this weekend, the Naughty and Natural Hair Festival will be Saturday, the 14th, bringing the community together to celebrate curls, kinks, coils, and hair of all textures. You can also see the Juneteenth Art Show on display now through the first week of July at the Center for the Arts. Mr. Mayor, council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Mr. Mayor, are you familiar with Ms. Bane, with the ordinance affecting Ms. Bane?
Yes, sir, I am.
Is it a convicted felon thing that we have in there?
Yes, sir, the way, very, I guess, to make it as simple as possible, yes, sir, that's exactly the way it was. When the ordinance was amended last year, we had a number of businesses, and by a number of businesses, a percentage of businesses that were caught up in a very similar situation as it pertains specifically to food trucks and the way the language in the ordinance articulates felons. So that is, I think Ms. Bane articulated it very well tonight, the concerns and how it's impacting her specifically. I do know of another instance where this has happened, so I am aware of this. Yes, sir.
Are we going to put that on the agenda next time to change that?
I think I would appreciate some council direction on that, but if I'm hearing and seeing nodding faces, I think between Chris's staff and business licensing and our folks in courts and law enforcement with their input on this, I think we can bring something back to this council for their consideration very quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Bettis, we can't add anything to the agenda tonight, but if you or other council members would like to have staff review those changes, I think it would be an appropriate conversation for a future meeting.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, let's move to old businesses this evening. We have only one matter before us, and that is the second and final reading of ordinance number 13-2025. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance Fiscal Year 2025-2026. It's an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, and making appropriations, therefore levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second and a second. Floor is open.
I just have a few questions about the revenue. Just want to make sure that in the future we work on these and our revenue from CPW, I believe that needs to be looked into because that hasn't been adjusted ever. The state aid, I thought, when I look back at, we've got the '25 budget, and then you go to '26 budget, and there's a significant increase in the dollar amount. Is the state aid not supposed to be almost a steady amount?
It's formulaic, and so it will. And if you'll recall, for a number of years, it was not funded to formula, but it is formulaic, and it is a proportionate share back down to state aid to municipalities. So you're going to see increases year over year. But it's formulaic.
At one time, we were trying to wean ourselves off on those dollars. And I don't know if we're able to continue that, but that would be good if we could do that. Don't put it in our, on the revenue side or a percentage each year and bank that money for, you know, if we get the dollar that we, you know, if we get dollars, then use them for nonrecurring expenditures. I think that we probably should look at that just in upcoming budget.
Yes, sir.
Not this one.
Yes, sir.
Others?
I'm sorry, I missed one of my questions. I didn't see it, and it's, they're probably gone, but there was an account that was from, not fines and forfeitures. It was more of, it stemmed from a very significant federal case where we got dollars back, lots of dollars. And at the time, we had been told that, well, this is under the purview of the police department. But I think this council said, no, you know, we need to make sure that we're looking at that. Are there any of those dollars still left?
Those dollars are accounted for and being applied, if I'm not mistaken, to the Public Safety Training Facility. That is in that, that, yes, those are restricted funds from fines and forfeitures. But we had identified those as a source of funds to go to the Public Safety Training Facility and are in that account to be used for that.
And that will be, that'll zero that?
That'll zero that out. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
My question is, in order to balance the budget when we lowered taxes to mills, I hope everybody heard that. Where did you, how did you do the revenue? Did you do it uniformly, or you had just a few places where you scaled it back, or what?
Go ahead.
Mr. Bettis, thank you. That would be, we actually reduced that in the taxes, so I did do it uniformly between Greenville County, Sparta County, between the two. But I essentially reduced two mills and then did the calculation based off of projected assessed value is how I reduced it, but it all came from taxes solely.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Others?
Mr. Mayor, just to offer a couple of comments, if I may. We have a lot of our staff in the room. I didn't say this at first reading, but I do want to just express my appreciation to department heads, other members of our staff and team that have worked so hard, not just during the budget process, but throughout the year, to help us arrive where we are at this time. You are the ones who drive all of this, for sure. And I'm super grateful for you, and I know all of us as members of council are as well. You know, I've done a lot of thinking about, you know, one of our main job is to steward resources and steward cash flow. And that's indeed a very important responsibility. As we've gone through this process this year, I think I'm probably as encouraged as I've ever been since I've been able to serve. And so I'm super excited about where we are, what we're addressing in this budget. Again, thanks to staff for pointing out these needs and bringing these ideas forward. And I'm also very encouraged and excited about the alternative revenue growth that we're seeing already in so many different places and the opportunity that that's providing for us to already begin reducing millage. When we made the decision last year to invest in our community and the way that we are, you know, some of the reasons that I based in being in favor of that is the fact that we're investing in public infrastructure that our citizens are going to enjoy and use and own for years to come. The fact that we were strengthening things like public safety and parks and recreation facilities and things like public infrastructure that our citizens demand and deserve. But I'm also very encouraged with the fact that we're already seeing that investment pay off, not just in terms of how we're going to be able to use those facilities and services, but the fact that we're already seeing some of the alternative revenue sources increase that way. And so I'm very excited to be able to keep the promise that I made to many of my constituents last year that understandably was met with some concern. You know, when governmental entities tell you they're going to roll back increases, you know, to your tax bill, how many times did that actually happen? Well, this is, I'm proud that we're doing that one year later. And I believe this is the first of multiple times to come, and I'm very encouraged by that. So again, thank you, staff, for the work that you've done and the job that you do every day to steward our resources on behalf of our constituents, our residents as well.
Others?
I know we had a lengthy debate last time about, it wasn't a debate, it was just a lot of comment about the golf course. I like what Rick said, that we're going to be here to discuss the budget all night and spend majority of our time talking about the golf course. And I just want to say that I look at the golf course as an asset. I got a call from a member of staff. I really appreciate them reaching out to me, and we talked a little bit about the golf course and the good things that it's done for the community, the green space that we expanded here inside the city. And I told you last time I got to host a tournament out there, and I've been out there several times and seen people at the restaurant, enjoying that, enjoying the driving range, enjoying the golf course itself. I mean, it is slam-packed with people inside the city. And we're still the most affordable golf course in this area. And now I saw that this week, we were on the list of best courses for municipal courses in the state. I think we're in the top 20 now. And I think that's a testament to our staff and the investments that this council's made in improving the conditions there. And so it's definitely a feather in our cap and a productive resource and asset, and it's going to continue to be for the long run as we continue to work on connecting it to Country Club Park and the trails and the good things that are going to be coming. So I echo what Mark said. I mean, the fact that we can roll back millage and continue to do all these great things this year. And the Sports and Events Center is just going to be right on top of that. I just see that as, like you said, a productive asset that the city can enjoy and utilize and own for years to come. And I look forward to that getting underway soon.
Others? Questions? Comments?
Well, I appreciate the efforts of all of you and all the different departments and all for us being able to have a decrease in the budget, a decrease for our citizens and all in the taxes. So I certainly appreciate all you've done to come up with that. It's great.
Anyone else?
Well, I will wrap our conversation up, if you will allow me, because I've got some information that I'd like to share, not only with you, council, but with our community and our staff as well. I would have voted for this budget without the decrease if that had come to pass. But I'm certainly proud to be standing in a position where we are going to be able to, to the points that have been made this evening about rolling the millage back, at least two mills. And I think we've done an excellent job on that. But this is really a good budget ordinance, and it addresses, as you've heard tonight, a lot of different things. It always seems to be a little confounding to me that people talk about, well, you know, back when millage wasn't so high, or back when taxes weren't so high, or back when things weren't so busy, and back when we did this, or back when we did that. And I just wanted to share a little information with you that I have come across. Did you know that there was a period of time in our city that it was growing faster than it is right now? Mr. Bettis and I are probably the only two with much memory of that. Maybe Mr. Airwood.
No, I'm not that way.
But our population in 1940 was less than 3,000. And in 1970, only 30 years later, was approximately 11,000 people. Now, you know, that's above 350%, which is unthinkable even today for the most part. But if you think about what was taking place during that time, particularly during the '40s and the '50s, you had people that were moving from rural parts of the county and our state. Housing was available, jobs were available in the mills, quality of life was seen to be high. There was just a number of reasons that we would have seen that kind of growth. And for those of you that were familiar with what was going on downtown, that was a pretty lively place during that period of time. And there was also a lot of growth in this area. It also came at a cost, because in 1972, as part of the home rule, lead up to the home rule, Greer introduced tax millage. The original tax millage in 1972 was 125 mills. Now, there are some here that also know what happened in the late '80s and certainly into the early '80s. By 1980, our population was down to about 10,000. And millage was 153 mills in 1980. By 1990, it had gone down another 300 to 500 people. But for some reason, the millage had dropped to 98 mills. By the year 2000, we had seen the population increase coming back. year 2000, we had seen the population increase coming back, but for some reason, in the year 2000 was the lowest millage the city has ever had, 81 mills. What makes that so complex to me or confounding to me is that in the 2000, 2001 budget, the city had to raise millage, 16 mills to 98 mills, when the city faced a 1.3 million deficit. It was actually the third year of a deficit. We had to take some rather drastic measures to overcome that, as some of you on this council remember. In 2002, we took the opportunity to lower millage to 94 mills. So just for comparison, if we took the average millage from 1975 to 2000, the average millage for that 25 years would have been 112 mills. Take the average for the past 25 years, from 2000 to 2025, the average mill would be 100.8. We're actually lower than where we were from 1975 to 2000. And as some of you have already noted, in that last 26 years, we've built a city hall, a courthouse, a police department, city park, a parking garage. We transformed Trade Street, leveled Point Set and Trade, did a landscaping project during that same time, put streetlights along Highway 29 from city limits to city limits, extended the Trade Street lighting and landscaping along North Main and Cannon. We've built our first parking garage, built Super Road Soccer Field, Super Road Fire Station. We've rehabbed the fire headquarters. We bought and refurbished a golf course. We've maintained all our city streets at a C-grade or above. We built new basketball courts. We've renovated the Greer Cultural Arts Center. We've renovated the Cannon Center. We've renovated Turner Fields. We've got multiple playgrounds, tennis courts, and pickleball courts, and improved the Tryon Street Recreation Area. And we also have been cognizant of the fact that the development in the downtown area shows an economic development multiplier of approximately 3.5. For every million dollars we've spent, we've reaped 3.5 times that much. I don't know about the good old days, if they were as good as maybe we remember or not, but I can tell you this, this is a good budget. We are in a good place. We are poised to continue to move forward, and we are doing right by this community, and they're going to see the results of this over the next three years, I can assure you.
Without any last thoughts before we call a vote? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we only have one item of new business this evening, which is a bid summary in regards to roadside mowing and median maintenance. Ms. Carmo is with us this evening. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, council members. This is a so invitation that was put out for a continuous service that we provide for commuters' safety to maintain these areas with roadside mowing and median maintenance. We only had one bidder submit. It is actually the same company that has been, that had the previous contract. And they, if awarded, they would have the agreement for three years and an option to renew for an additional three years. And with that, I'll open, there's been a great performance from this company, so we, the staff recommend award. And with that, I'll open to any questions.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Floor is open.
I see that the only on and off ramps that we are responsible for, Highway 101 and '85, is that right? Why don't we maintain at the 14 on and off ramps?
I'll direct that question to Travis Durham, who's the Public Services Director.
Good evening. Honestly, I'm not sure if I can answer the question standing here this evening. It was passed down to me, I guess you could say, from when Steve Grant was in public services. I don't know if maybe Steve has a better answer, or maybe Mike would have the answer there. Unfortunately, it's kind of the way it was given to me, so... Mike, I don't know if you have any insight, maybe?
It is part of the ISM '85 project. We have an agreement with B W and those folks out there to maintain that infrastructure. We don't have that same kind of agreement for separate agreements.
I would suggest, and I don't, it looks junky at 14 and '85. And I don't know if we have to ask permission to do anything, but it just looks bad out there. Not the big "Welcome to Spartanburg County" sign, but just the on and off, especially the on-ramps, a lot of stuff in the gutters and, you know, just that kind of thing. It just, it reflects on us. I mean, it doesn't reflect on the state or anyone else. I just, if we can do something about that, that would be wonderful. And this is, the technology may not even be there, but we're doing, $207,000 for the three-year period, $69,000 annually. That's kind of what I have spoken about over time. Okay, can we have one person and a piece of our equipment plus, you know, an implement do all of this? And, you know, at some point, the equipment is paid for and you've got, you've got another, then you have a, the base for that implement and the person able to do something else in the, I guess, the other eight months out of the year.
Yes, sir.
So that's my thinking behind all that, just for the future.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
In that vein, there does seem, not specific to that intersection, but just in general, if you drive around the city, there seems to be a lot of, I don't know if it's trash bags that are coming out and getting hit and, you know, debris scattered all over the road. And I'm not sure if it's because there are trucks driving through the city with uncovered loads or exactly what's happening, but it does seem to be a trend. And I don't know if it's just because we use so much more plastics now, or I don't know exactly what's happened on that front, but I don't know if it's an enforcement thing or if it's just...
Yeah, we work with Palmetto Pride often on a number of these community initiatives and do cleanups. I know that the county is actively engaged in enforcement with the Cover Your Load initiative, but it is a pervasive problem throughout the state. And when you've got the corridors that we have on Wade Hampton and Buncombe and 14, and 101, crisscrossing Greer, and the amount of truck traffic that comes along with that, it is, it's a sad state of inevitable affairs that that is what we have to look at. But it is, you are not alone in that disdain for our roadsides.
Yep. We ought to be able to find some kind of vacuum system that's out there today that would just, you know, it's almost like an emergency deal that you, hey, there's two or three bags of household garbage that's laying out here in the road, you know, they've been blown open, send that vehicle out there, vacuum it up, be done with it instead of... I don't know. It looks like to me there should be some piece of equipment out there, so we probably ought to be looking, but just besides our vac truck.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I would wonder, too, as part of the maintenance of the right-of-way and the work that's going to be done here, if they actively pick up the trash before they run over it with the mowers and things like that, because I think that happens quite a bit, too.
Yeah, that is one of the things that is in the contract, is making sure that none of that litter or debris is just run over with a lawnmower, picking those things up, so.
Good. What do you do with dead animals?
We pick them up, public services, and dispose of them.
Wondered. I see a lot of dead animals on the road.
Yep. We are the Deceased Animal Patrol, if you will.
There you go.
Yeah.
Quickly, others? Ms. Counsel, the recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
You've got it.
End of second.
I think you did that already.
Oh, we already got it? Okay. Final comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, we have no items for executive session. Stand and join.
My answer would have been, my answer would have been, you don't want to know. My answer to that would have been, you don't want to know.
His answer was, you don't want to know.